Well, my name is Adrian Hernandez and I'm currently the mayor pro tem of the city of Pearland, Texas, just south of Houston. And we are the third largest city in the greater Houston Galveston area. So we've got about 130,000 people here. And I'm a member of the Brazoria County Young Republicans. I was elected in 2018. And prior to serving on city council, I was already kind of somewhat connected to the city, serving on the Parks, Rec and Beautification Board, which is an appointed position. And, you know, so I really had my priorities already figured out whenever I ran. And so it was pretty, pretty clean transition for me, I think, in some respects. Of course, there are always things that you have to take your crash courses on and, and kind of get a feel for the ropes. And so there was some learning on the job. But I think overall, in the areas where I had my priorities laid out in my campaign back in 2018, I had a firm grasp on, you know, what I wanted to do for the city. And really, that was advocating and looking for opportunities to form more what they call, you know, Triple P or private-public partnerships, and bring in outside dollars to the city, try to advocate to bring in, you know, as much funding as we possibly can to build out infrastructure, and really invest in ourselves, provide quality-of-life upgrades and things of that nature. So that's really a big part of what I ran on. The other piece was communication and just finding opportunities to increase our transparency and to better connect and engage with the community. So, you know, that was really one of the other big things. I already had the opportunity to kind of see how the city communicated for events that we did through the Parks Department, things like that. And I brought that forward whenever I ran for council, found those opportunities. I've spent a lot of my time kind of playing around with the ways that I communicate in my office, as well as communicating back with the city, and trying to find the things at work and saying, hey, have we tried this? And, and just being a little bit more aggressive in the way, I guess, in how we try new things and try to connect with the community. I think we've done a wonderful job since I've been on council. But obviously, there's always room for improvement. So I'm committed to that. I, day-to-day, as a part-time city council member, which that's what we are, and I think a lot of council members across the state are part-timers. We have our day jobs, and then, you know, council is really, even though they say it's part-time, is like our second full-time job. And if you really try hard, if you really invest yourself and commit yourself to the, to the, to the role of city council member, it's almost like your second and third full-time job. Because you've got the community engagement piece where you're actively, you know, participating in events and clubs like BCYR, or clubs like, you know, HOAs and civic organizations, nonprofits in your community. I mean, you're visible in all of those things, and not just visible, but also contributing to those. But in addition to that, you've got the actual city business that you also have to take care of. And so we get our packets for joint public hearings, regular council meetings, joint special meetings with our planning and zoning, where we're doing everything from approving conditional use permits for specific types of businesses, working on zoning classifications, thinking forward, and strategic planning workshops, things of that nature, but also budget, and just the day-to-day expenditures of infrastructure, capital improvements. All of these types of things come before us, and we're expected to commit the time, energy, and even personal resources to familiarize ourselves with our agenda, but also with our community as a whole. So we can understand not only the decisions that we make from a, I think, a fiscal responsibility perspective, but also the decisions that we make from, I think, a representative perspective as well, and trying to understand what's important to our community, and the decisions that sometimes we may feel are in the best interest of the city, may not necessarily reflect what the community wants you to do. And so you got to really kind of weigh those things, spend time, even what I call the politicking side of elected office, is being out in the community. And sometimes, things are just misunderstood. And again, it goes back to the piece of communication. And so, you know, sometimes, again, you've got to bridge the gap between the decisions that you think are in the best interest and the public's perception of something, what they may want you to do. And you may have to go out in the community and actually, you know, sell people or just educate people on decisions that you think are in the best interest of the city as a whole. So it's, it is definitely something that you have to be committed and really love your city to serve well in this role, because it's not something that you can just do part-time, even though we're called part-time counselors. It really is something that will take up every ounce of any free time that you may have had in your, your pre-council life. And, you know, we're term limited after two, three-year commitments. And so we serve six years. And I got to tell you, the first three years, people always remark at how gray my beard is now, after the first two and a half years. And that's because I care about the city. And so I think, you know, if you really care, that it's, it's probably three or four, like I said, full-time jobs rolled into one part-time position, if you will. When I was on the Parks Board, I was also serving on two other nonprofit boards at the time. I had, just in conversations with people about the community, had kind of been asked by multiple people, would you be interested in running? And I said, well, I definitely think about it. So I went to the other members of the Parks Board at the time and just kind of asked them, and asked some other people on the nonprofit boards that I was serving with, and said, you know, I took these appointments to these various boards and so forth. I think, well, not that I think, I know, I took them because I wanted to serve. But I think one of the important pieces of that commitment was that I wanted them to feel like I was there to actually serve in that capacity, and serve those organizations, and serve the community, and not use it as a springboard for, you know, political gain, if you will. So I had several heart-to-hearts with people and said, you know, I think that this is an opportunity where I could, you know, run for office and potentially win. We've got a lot of different facets and organizations behind the campaign, if you will, a lot of people that were kind of coming together. And I really felt like I was able to represent a very broad group of individuals and communities and so forth. And so I felt really empowered to do it. But I wanted to make sure that, again, the people to whom I'd made these commitments in the organizations, to whom I'd made these commitments, were comfortable with me doing it. And through those conversations, when I got the feedback that, hey, if you're on council, you can still serve us, just in a different capacity. But you can take our voice, you can take the things that are important to us, to the council dais, and continue to advocate for, you know, our cause and our organizations and our place in the community. By all means, go for it. And so I, like I said, I felt really truly supported and empowered by my community. I felt like it wasn't me who was running, but rather, it was this group. So I continually referred to, you know, us, and say, you know, thank you for voting for us, or, you know, how can we do these things in the community? And, you know, I won, and I truly, to this day, believe that it was because I took those three years and didn't commit them to building up, you know, a political machine, but rather, took them building up the city. And I really committed myself to the rising tide, you know, way of life in everything that I did. And I think that that has served me very well. And I continue to, to take that mindset forward in everything that I do, and continue to advocate, not just for the city of Pearland, but truly for everybody that's here, and all the different organizations and so forth, that I think, come together to contribute and build the community that I, communities that I love. I think, you know, obviously, every community is different. But one of the things that I think has been one, a goldmine to me, if you will, as far as providing perspective and preparing me for a role like serving on city council, is I think being a part of, not necessarily having to serve on a board, per se, but just being a part of the organization as a member, or showing up to an event as a volunteer, or something like that, are just finding the, the organizations in your community that are, I think, established, that have been serving for, you know, decades at a time, and have a, represent, I think, a diverse kind of cross-group of ages and, and, you know, backgrounds, and just the whole thing. I mean, truly, if I found, and I think there's a lot of truth to this, but I think in practice, and a really good illustration of the mantra of their strength and diversity, it is in these organizations. When you can go into an organization, you know, even like the Pearland Historical Society, or, you know, I'm now with Keep Pearland Beautiful, and I've got to be careful, there's some blurry lines there, you know, working for a nonprofit, but previously is on the Board of Directors. You know, these organizations have been around for a long time. And so they give you access to, you know, former city council members, they give you access to community leaders that have been serving for decades, they give you access to business leaders, they give you access to just kind of your, your retired, want to give back to the community people. They give you access to, you know, families and moms and dads with their young kids, and college students that are trying to build up their, you know, their, their resumes. And I mean, just, again, there are so many people that are involved in these types of organizations that, when you put yourself in those positions to soak up the knowledge that's provided, to soak up the perspective that's provided, I think that has done more for me than anything else. Because I'm able to go out into the community and have conversations with people with the perspective that I didn't have previously. And it helps me form, not just connections, but I think meaningful connections to people. We're able to connect on things that are not just the here and now, and talking about, you know, what are we doing now, or what are we doing in the future, but, you know, helps to maybe add a little color to the conversation and say, the reason we're doing this now, or the reason that we consider doing something in the future, is because of maybe something that happened 10 years ago, or 40 years ago, that led us to where we are today. I think that really helps to get people behind causes, behind decisions that you make. That, to me, is probably the most critical and crucial piece of advice that I can offer to anybody who's thinking about running. Obviously, there are people who are just super, super intelligent, and they see a need in the community, and they've got the brains and, and the know-how to maybe fix something. And those people, I think, even if they don't have those connections, even if they don't invest themselves in the organizations and so forth that I talked about, they have a place in, in local politics, too. I think they can serve. But for me, thinking about being a well-rounded servant to your community, I think that means having that perspective, forming those meaningful relationships, and being able to see things, you know, not just through your lens, but through the lens of across the ages and across the belief systems and, and experiences of the other people that you're serving in your community. That, to me, is, like I said, the most important thing that I think I've been able to experience in my, leading up to my political career, and really prepared me to serve. So it depends on the, the board. Some boards or commissions have to go through interviews. And I had interviewed for, I believe I interviewed for the Economic Development Corporation Board. But I was ultimately chosen to be on the Parks Board. And the Parks Board, you didn't have to interview. But I think why that's important is because, number one, you get to, I think, interact with the current city council and the other, you know, members that are involved in your local government, both during the application process, as well as the interview process, if there's an interview associated with your appointment. But number two, it, I think, will, well, I don't want to say that it's going to prepare you for every type of, you know, scenario or decision that comes before, like a council. But what I think it does is it gives you the opportunity to experience the pace of government, if you will, the process involved. And it helps you to become, not only, I think, I don't want to say patient, because maybe that's not the right word, because you don't have to be patient. But I think it, it helps you understand that government involves consensus building, right? There are a lot of moving parts and different departments, individuals that are, that have to be brought into the mix when making a decision. And you realize that decisions aren't made in vacuums. And being on an advisory board, or a commission, or a council, something like that, shows you that you're part of a team, and your input is just one, one piece of the puzzle. That, I think, is also incredibly valuable in having that understanding. When you're on council, it is all about consensus building. It's all about trying to find ways to convince other people that the ideas that you have are good for their community, and get them to kind of, you know, join along with you and push something forward. I, I don't want to say that I, I believe that the statement I'm about to make is necessarily gospel, but I think it's, it's really important. And I hear a lot of people talk about, oh, well, you know, I hate rubber-stamp councils. You know, you go in and everybody, it's seven to zero. We have seven on our council, seven to zero. And so it just, you know, it should never be seven to zero, you know. So, but to me, truly, the best decisions that are made are the ones where they are, it is seven to zero, where you're able to derive that consensus. And it's really like, look, we're a team, and we, as a group, all of us, have come to an understanding that the decision that we're making on the dais tonight is truly in the best interest. And the fact that all seven of us agree, I think, means that, okay, this is probably something that is needed, or it's something that is very positive, will bring positive things to our community. So I think avoiding contention and building out an agenda, building out a strategic plan and outlook for your city that involves the input preemptively of all of the members of not just your council, but I think also city staff, the various boards and commissions, you have the opportunity to be a part of that. You have the opportunity to be a part of strategic planning for, you know, your board or your commission, things like that, serving on something like the Parks and Rec Board, or the Planning and Zoning Commission, ahead of going on to council. And you understand the consensus-building aspects, you understand what your role is. And so when you're on council, and you're making decisions, and you have the input that's provided by these boards and commissions, all of a sudden, you understand the value that they bring to the table as well. And you're not making decisions in a vacuum. You're able to understand, look, the members of our Parks and Recreation Beautification Board, they are at these events that I, as a council member, may not be a part of, or they're involved in the planning of the amenities of this particular park, that I, as a council member, may not have the time to involve myself with. So I'm going to make a decision using their input and really placing a lot of faith in the feedback that they provide and the data that they present, because I know that they're committed. Because, number one, as a city council member, I've appointed them, right? Or may not have appointed all of them, but I've, you know, I've been part of the process, maybe appointed some of them. And so, again, it just, it helps you to become comfortable with the decisions you make and the input that you receive. So, I mean, to me, that's, that's super important. I have relationships with a lot of our, you know, various commissioners and, and members of different boards and things like that. And so I trust them wholeheartedly in the feedback that they give me, the input that they give me. And I try to always factor that in my decisions. And I think that's, it's a great thing that we have them, and we should be comfortable utilizing them. Local government is, to me, the most important level of government. And I talk about this constantly. I know I'm a broken record. Anybody that knows me is going to hear this and start rolling their eyes. But it's important that we have conservatives on council, because, again, the decisions that we make directly, and I think very intimately, impact the lives of our constituents. But it's also important because local government, as long as it's preserved in its current form, allows constituents, taxpayers, you know, citizens and voters, to hold their elected representatives accountable. And so when we make decisions locally, you know, you can run into people at the grocery store, or at church, or at the local event, or fundraiser, things like that. And they have the opportunity to really, truly confront you about things and say, you know, why'd you do this? Or maybe it's not working out the way that you intended it. And when that's the case, we have the opportunity to reverse course, whether negatively or positively, and have that take effect immediately. And I think that's huge. So I, I'm not going to say that, I guess, liberals don't believe in, you know, local control, they don't believe in kind of preserving, you know, the, what I consider to be the sanctity of local government, to the same degree. But, I mean, we've seen movements like Project Lift, for instance, from the Texas Democrat, Democrat Party, Democratic Party, that have come into local communities. And Project Lift has, has turned local elections upside down and made them wholly partisan, you know. And all of a sudden, it's no longer about, you know, providing park space for kids to play, and filling potholes so people can commute safely to work, or providing clean water for people to drink. All of a sudden, now it's about national issues, and all of these things that really are aligned with a, a party, and not with the needs of a community. Or, and that, that has been super frustrating to see that shift locally. I think, and this is purely anecdotal, but I think the conservative leaders that I know, they are still committed, I think, to, I want to say, the nonpartisan nature of local elections. Because you can, you can serve, and you can serve as a conservative, and I think not necessarily as a Republican locally. And, you know, we may be members, I tell people, you know, yeah, sure, I'm a Republican. I've been voting Republican since I could vote. But that doesn't mean that the decisions I'm making locally are necessarily aligned with the Republican Party. They're aligned with my conservative ideologies, you know. And I believe in fiscal responsibility. I believe in limited government. These things can easily be applied at the local level. And I think they, the decision that we make, I truly, again, as a conservative, I believe in kind of the, the engines of innovation, and the economic incubator arguments and stuff, of allowing cities to compete with each other, just like we should allow states to compete with each other. I don't necessarily see that same thought on the left. I see movements towards uniformity and kind of one-size-fits-all type of governance. That's just, I just can't see that that's good for communities. And serving on some national boards, the National League of Cities, I'm on some federal advocacy committee, and I was chair of the First Year Suburbs Council, which represents, you know, all of the suburbs outside of major metropolitan areas, we're so vastly different, you know, let alone in, you know, our Houston-Galveston area region, the 13 counties that make up the HGAC CAG. But let alone the cities in our region being so vastly different. I mean, Sugar Land is completely different from Pearland, and Pearland is completely different from the Woodlands. And the Woodlands is completely different from the city of Houston, and Houston's different from Galveston. And so it's clear to me that the decisions that we make should be based on the, the needs and wants of our community. And I'm seeing this, again, this trend on the left that is moving towards, again, this uniform-type governance, uniform rule, giving more credence to the state, letting them usurp local authority, and, you know, moving even higher than that, and giving the federal government more opportunity to come in. And it's, what it's doing is it's creating more reliance upon the federal government. It's making cities become less and less self-sustainable. It's taking the opportunity for local officials to truly govern the way that their constituents want them to govern. And it's putting the authority in the hands of people who are thousands of miles away, who have no connection to your community whatsoever. That's why I think it's important that you have conservative values representing you at the local level. We need more people to fight to sustain or to preserve the, I think, the intended roles of local government versus county government versus state government versus the federal government. Because once, once you lose, once you get, you know, they say you give an inch, it'll take a mile. Once you lose the authority to, to govern yourself, you know, I even, as much as, and I'm going to roll my eyes now, because I can't believe I'm about to say this, as much frustration as I've experienced with HOAs, for instance, I think even HOAs represent a level of government. And, you know, they, that should be honored, you know. I think one neighborhood is different from the next neighborhood. So, yeah, I don't want to continue to belabor the point. I think it's clear at this point. But that, I think, is probably the most important reason why we need to get more conservatives elected at the local level. Because if we don't fight to preserve our autonomy, we're going to lose it, we're never going to get it back. And all of a sudden, every decision that we made is going to be made by a bureaucrat thousands of miles away, probably not even elected, but a member of some department appointed by somebody, making, making decisions that may not be in your best interest, because they simply cannot understand the needs and wants and nuances of, you know, a city, or an HOA, or even a county, for that matter. Oh, brother. I am probably one of the least politically savvy elected officials in the world. I, I will say that you got it. Number one, and I think first and foremost for me, and I'm sure a lot of people will disagree, because I know a lot of people think that, you know, data is king. Familiarize yourself with how to work data, how to, you know, target voters and things like that. Get out there and really connect with the people who will not just support you, but, you know, actually show up to vote. I mean, that's just huge. I mean, finding out who votes is probably 90% of it, and I just haven't figured out that 90% is better than 10% yet. But I also think you just have to be visible. You have to be willing to commit yourself to every opportunity that presents itself within reason, obviously. And that's really hard for some people to do, but that's, I think, what it takes. You have to be visible. You have to be present. Because if you're not, and you somehow end up winning, and you're sitting up there on that dais, one of the, for me, one of the most important things that I have figured out, and this was our, our former mayor here in Pearland told me this, and the guy is, is a legend. He's been serving since before I was born, and most of the people I know were born. He's 94 years old now, and has been mayor for 30-something years, and served on council even longer than that. You can't say his name anywhere that I've been around the state in elected circles without people saying, oh, yeah, Tom, I know, I know, Tom. But he, he's involved in everything. And that's why people know him, right? He was involved in our CAG, he was involved at the state level, and all these different committees and organizations and nonprofits. And he told me, "You get things for your city more times than not, simply because you show up, because you're there, because your voice is heard." And he said, "You would be shocked at how many elected officials simply get in their position, get overwhelmed, don't show up to things, don't put in the time to network and advocate for their, for their city and for their citizens, for their voters, for their taxpayers, and they miss out on opportunities." There's so many opportunities that are available, you just have to be present, you have to be visible, you have to be there to know, number one, that these things exist, and number two, to ask for them. And so I've done that, and I followed his example, I've followed his advice. I've really, you know, planted myself wherever people allow me to grow. And so, for instance, you know, I serve currently as the president of the Brazoria County Cities Association, and I have opportunities to network with all of the cities in our county. I work with our Harris County Association, and have gotten, you know, great connections there, and, and relationships, I think, have served me well. But I also serve with National League of Cities, like I said. I served as chair of First Year Suburbs Council, vice chair of the Energy, Environment, Natural Resources Committee. I serve as the chair of the Solid Waste Management Committee with the Houston-Galveston Area Council. I serve on, you know, some grant scoring committees for HGC with their, their parks and natural areas. I serve with their Clean Water Group. I serve with Keep Texas Beautiful as the judge at some of their grants and opportunities there. I serve with the Water Now Alliance. I serve wherever people will allow me, and particularly those areas that align with my interests and my, my, my actual, like, full-time job, the first of the four. And, and through that, I have allowed myself to advocate for my city, and I'll give you some concrete examples. We, last year, brought four- We, last year, brought forward uh thirty-seven thousand dollars in grants for equipment at some of our city facilities, simply, again, by showing up. We uh got, just got a a forty-thousand-dollar grant. This is not through my position, you know, as a city council member, but my position as a city council member opened the door to allow me to serve in this capacity, my also for my day job. We got a forty-thousand-dollar grant um to do some nature-based infrastructure, planting a thousand trees, which is going to um offset tens of millions of gallons of stormwater runoff in our city and help with, uh, you know, drainage infrastructure mitigation, things like that, which is going to save us tons of money. You know, but also other opportunities to bring, you know, grant dollars and stuff into the city and and advocate like, you know, our former mayor, Mayor Reed. I mean, I think our our current mayor has stepped into this role as well, working with H G A C and he's, our our new mayor is is phenomenal as well. And so I think he's going down that same pathway, being on some of the boards that bring us, you know, the opportunity to match or not match, but rather pay for eighty percent of some of our infrastructure projects. So now all we have to do is pay for twenty percent because we were there, we were able to advocate, we know about the programs, we push for them, we bring that money into our city. You got to be visible. You have to be willing to work, advocate for your city. Because a lot of these opportunities present themselves because you're present, you're visible, people know you and you know, it it's uh, it may not be your time, the first time you apply for something and the first time you advocate and push for something. But second, third year, as more people know you, as more people uh hold stock in your service, you know, the opportunities all of a sudden continue to grow and you uh become more of an asset to your community. And I mean, that's, that's why you get elected in the first place. And so you got to commit yourself and 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 people will know that you're a known commodity and they'll allow you to um you're more comfortable they are. I mean, nobody's going to give you a grant or let you run a project or something if they're unfamiliar with you, if they don't know that you have the experience and the the knowledge to get something done. But as people begin to know who you are and are familiar with your service and your dedication, they'll give you the opportunity. That's, that's huge. That's, that's what serving is all about.